Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am David Vitale, President of the Chicago Board of Education, and on behalf of my fellow members, I want to welcome you to today's Chicago Board of Education meeting. Today is April 22, 2015, and we are holding this month's meeting here at the boardroom at 42 West Madison. Madam Secretary, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you, Mr. President. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The regular meeting of April 22, 2015, is hereby called to order. Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Beenan.
Here.
Dr. Heinz.
Here.
Vice President Reese.
Here.
Board members up.
Here.
Dr. Escoitia.
Present.
President Vitale.
Here.
Six members present. There is a quorum, and I would also like to recognize our General Counsel, Mr. James Vebley, our Honorary Student Board Member, Angel Diaz, and this month's Shadow Student, Ariel Gomez. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good morning again, everyone. All of us are here today because we have one thing in common: a desire to see the children of Chicago live up to their potential. Whether you are a parent, a community stakeholder, teacher, coach, board member, you are here because you want to see our children succeed. We've seen a lot of progress over the last several years: higher graduation rates, attendance, and test scores. But we must stay focused so that we can continue our progress and become the district we know we can. We have a somewhat unusual situation today. As I am sure you are aware, the board was notified last week of an investigation by the U.S. Attorney's Office into a CPS matter. In the course of last week, as a result of the investigation, Dr. Barbara Bird Bennett advised me on Thursday that she would like to take leave of absence because she believed that the investigation would be a distraction to her work and to the district and would not be in the best interests of the children of Chicago. And so she asked for a leave of absence, which I acceded to. Today, on our agenda, at the end of our voting agenda, you will see a resolution that authorizes Board Vice President Jesse Ruiz to act in an interim capacity as CEO of this district. He will not be compensated financially, and he will not vote on matters that are presented to the board after that appointment later today. I want to publicly thank Jesse for stepping into this role. As I think most of you know, he's a well-respected attorney here in town. He has spent four years on this board, and so therefore knows the district exceedingly well. Prior to that, Jesse spent, I think it was seven years, as the Chairman of the Illinois State Board of Education. So he comes with enormous experience regarding the education process in our state and in our city. I'm aware of his other actions that show his commitment to education of our children. We are extraordinarily lucky that a man of his skill set is willing to step into this role at this time. I know that he will take the interests of our children seriously and will also ensure that our students continue to build on their impressive gains. As I said on Friday publicly, when we announced Mr. Ruiz's appointment, that there is an ongoing investigation, and therefore, there are a number of unanswered questions that we all have that we will continue to try to understand more of. But as we've examined the request for information that has come from the state's attorney, it has become apparent that among the things that they are looking at, in particular, is a contract with an entity called Supes Academy. The contract with Supes Academy is what we call a sole-source contract, which has been referred to as a no-bid contract. What I want to assure the public is that our procurement process here at the Board of Education, Chicago Public School System, is a highly effective one in which almost all, almost all of our contracts are subject to a public bidding or request for proposal It's a process that is consistent with all state regulations and with board policy. It is a relatively rare instance that, in fact, management determines that they have a service that they're interested in pursuing for which there may be only a sole vendor available. That is what we call a sole-source contract. They are relatively unique, but because they are sole-source, we actually have a separate procurement process in which the management makes the case for the services that they are seeking and why the vendor can meet the specifications of those services. They make that case to a committee here in the system, and the committee determines whether or not the standards for sole sourcing have either been met or not met. If they are met, the board is briefed on the sole sourcing prior to our voting. The Supes Academy contract was such a sole-source contract, and it did follow that process. Having said that, in light of recent events, we've determined, I announced and Jesse followed up with a memo to staff over the weekend, that we should pursue engaging a third party to come in and take a look at that sole-source process. And we have, in fact, initiated the steps necessary to engage that party. I should point out that in engaging such a party, we actually have to go through our procurement process and ask for requests for services, which we have initiated today. And we will go through the procurement process to make a determination on who that party will be. It'll take a few days because the process is thorough. The contract for that request for services actually is being posted publicly for today, and will be competitively bid. I should also point out that roughly two years ago, when this contract was, in fact, approved, there was a great deal of public comment and concern about the nature of the You should all know that I have regularly scheduled meetings with the Inspector General, whose responsibility is to look after issues of concern here at the district in terms of behavior and ethics and so forth. My regular meetings with the Inspector General are basically to talk about those concerns, concerns that he has, concerns that I may have, concerns that we may jointly have, about things that he needs to look into. They're also there for him to report back to me on investigations that have been completed or any other matters that he raises. Shortly after the entering of this contract with Supes Academy, in one of my meetings with the Inspector General at that time, he and I agreed that there was enough noise around this issue, that it is something that he should look into. And he did initiate work on this contract at that time. You should also know that it's inappropriate for me, or any board member, to engage with the Inspector General on his work while it is going on. So I do not unless he raises issues that require my attention, such as whether he's getting full cooperation in his work. I want to say to everybody that I have had no discussion with the Inspector General, the prior Inspector General, or his successor since that time about his work on the Supes So we will look forward to ultimately his results on his review of that contract. In the meantime, we here at the Board of Education and in the management will continue our focus on providing the children of Chicago with an education that prepares them for success in college and career. As public servants, it's our highest priority in ensuring the integrity and honesty in everything that we do. I hope that the actions that we are taking will make it clear that we take our responsibility as public servants seriously and that we will always put the interests of our children and the families first. In this time of transition, we ask our students, teachers, and principals to remain focused in the classroom and finish the school year strong. The commitment of the administration here, our school leaders and our teachers to education is and always will remain the bedrock of our district. And with that, I'd like to ask Jesse if you'd like to make a few comments.
Sure. Thank you, David. Dave, and members, my colleagues on the board, it's an honor to speak to you this morning as the soon-to-be officially interim CEO of Chicago Public Schools. As many of you know, I have long dedicated myself to improving public education, as David mentioned, in my past four years on this board, my almost seven years on the State Board of Education, and prior to that, five years on the desegregation monitoring committee, roughly about five years here at CPS, and two years on the U.S. Department of Education Equity and Excellence Commission, and a variety of other things. I realize the critical importance of public education. In Chicago, I see students from all backgrounds, in every neighborhood, making tremendous progress inside the classroom. I see children with unlimited potential to change the city and the world we live in. As a board member for four years, I'm proud of the progress our students, teachers, and principals made, and grateful for the support for that progress that parents and caregivers provide at home every single day. I'm also familiar with the financial challenges confronting our district and what we need from Springfield to continue moving forward. It is important for all of us to stay focused on the task at hand so our children can have the access to the quality education they all deserve and need. As President Vitale mentioned, there are a number of questions we all have regarding the investigation, but I want to assure everyone that we are taking this matter very seriously. First, we are in the process of hiring an outside firm through a competitive bid to conduct an independent review of the sole contracting process. We have a good process. We want to ensure it's the best process, and it can't possibly be better. Their task will be to evaluate the approval process and determine whether reforms to the sole-source process need to be made. Second, we have ordered an immediate halt to approving any new sole-source contracts pending the findings of this independent audit. Third, as of today, I am suspending the Supes contract. We do not have any further information on the investigation, but I think it's in the district's best interest to suspend the contract effective immediately, until we receive full and thorough information. I have also asked CPS Legal Counsel to prepare options to terminate the contract if any wrongdoing is found. As public servants, our highest priority is ensuring the integrity and honesty in everything we do, and we must always put the interests of our children and their families first. In this time of transition, we ask our students, teachers, principals to remain focused in the classroom and finish the year strong. We are all immensely proud of the hard work they are doing each and every day. Thanks to their effort, the efforts of so many others, including their families, our students are raising the bar for academic achievement at CPS. And focusing on academic achievement, I do want to acknowledge the many schools who are doing great projects today. It's Earth Day today. Let's not forget, it's Earth Day. And South Lutheran Elementary is viewing Monkey Kingdom. Poe Classical is planting flowers. Taylor School is engaging in a recycling project. Burley is planting vegetable garden. McCullough is also doing a neighborhood cleanup project. Andrew Jackson is planting a garden. Earl Elementary is doing a cool-weather seedling open house. So I acknowledge their efforts, and this was a partial list of the many efforts going on across the district. That's what this is about. It's about these efforts and our children. That's my focus, and I assure you that will be my focus in my time here, and that's why I do what I do. I understand the importance, and I selfishly do that because I realize even though they're not my children, they impact my life in this city and in this world, and so I look forward to working with you all that because I know you all understand that as well. So thank you for your partnership in our endeavors and for the kind words of support I've been given thus far and the constructive critique that, of course, comes with these endeavors, and look forward to working with you all to make this the best possible district for our children and our teachers. Thank you.
Thanks, Jesse. And once again, on behalf of the board, thank you for taking on this role. We know how important it is.
It's not official yet, right?
Okay. It'll be official by the end of this meeting.
I'm not escaping yet.
You're not escaping voting today, but after that, you won't have to vote. So let's move on with the meeting, and we're going to start, as we usually do, with our Honorary Student Board Member, Angel Diaz, introducing this month's Shadow Student. Angel.
Thank you, President Vitale and Vice President Reese. Today, we are joined by Ariel Gomez, a junior from Chicago High School for Agricultural Sciences. Ariel will be sharing a few important things about her CPS experience this year.
Hello. Ooh. Hello. Is it working? Yeah, fine. Sorry. Hello, everyone. I would like to thank the board members and honorary student member for allowing me the wonderful chance to participate in today's meeting. My name is Ariel Gomez, and I am a junior at Chicago High School for Agricultural Sciences, and I went to the elementary school at Sutherland. Well, I went to elementary school at Sutherland. While attending Chicago Ag, I have developed leadership and speaking skills. I've had opportunities to travel out of Chicago and visit colleges and go to conferences. Most importantly, I've been given the opportunity and insight to explore the agricultural field. Now, because of Chicago Ag, it is one of my interests and a future career option. I am very honored to be selected as the April Shadow Student because I am with so many CPS officials. Being here for this meeting has given me a chance to meet and get to know the president of the board, with whom I have very much enjoyed meeting. Today, I hope to learn about some CPS issues and hear how we find solutions. Thank you again for such a great opportunity and experience.
Thank you, Ariel. You know, I did have a chance to sit down and talk to Ariel earlier today, and, you know, she is just an incredible young woman. She's a junior, so she's got another year to school to go, but as she said, she's already thinking about the kind of college she'll go to when she completes next year. She's California dreaming, right, Ariel? Yeah. But we are really fortunate to have students like Ariel in our schools, and thank you for coming down and joining us today. We appreciate having you. And Angel, thanks for introducing her.
And our principal is here.
Bill, are you here?
Yep, he's right there.
Where? Oh, there you are. I'm sorry. Ariel's principal, the foot from Chicago Ag, is here today. I heard about the drive-down, by the way. Ariel told me about everything. Says you've got to work on your driving loop.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill, and thanks for doing a great job out at Chicago Ag. So let's see. With that, it's also an opportunity for us to, again, recognize the outstanding contributions that our students are making and achievements that they're getting. And so with that, I'm going to ask Tamara and Arthee Dupre to come and tell us about some chess work and some student advisory work.
Great. Good morning, everyone. Thank you, President Vitale and board members. My name is Tamara Prather, and as a part of my work here at CPS, I have the tremendous honor of being one of the leaders of the CPS Student Advisory Council. And this morning, I had the great pleasure of introducing new members of the council who were recently selected and have started their work. These students are coming from a variety of schools across the district, representing various neighborhoods across the city, and really representing the diversity of our student body. So we're very happy to have them take part in this important work and provide invaluable feedback and perspective to the leaders of CPS and to the board. So this council was created in 2014, and if you all remember, we introduced the group about a year ago this time, and we've come full circle, and now we're inviting additional new members to the board. They're all very excited to be here. We're a big group. They will be a part of this work for 18 months, so they'll stay engaged until they graduate in the spring of 2016. They're going to share their voice and provide recommendations to issues that they identify as being important to students of the district. They actually do a lot of hands-on problem-solving in partnership with the MiGFA Challenge. So in addition to us putting them to work and tapping them for their voice, we really like to feed into these students as well, and so we provide a lot of mentoring opportunities and leadership development opportunities for them. Each student brings a very unique perspective, so again, I'm just extremely excited to welcome this new group and new voices to the council. In addition to recognizing the new members of the council, I do want to honor our veteran members, the original members of the council. Many of them are actually here with us today as well, and they will continue to serve on the council until they graduate this spring. And they serve more as mentors and role models to the members of the council. And we really appreciate all of the work that they've done over the last year. They worked on a number of issues, things like violence in our communities and schools, college and career readiness, truancy. They even created a restorative practices video that's being shared with principals. And so just a tremendous job that they've done over the past year. Lastly, I want to acknowledge the principals and staff members who support this work. We have a room full of principals and staff members in the viewing area today because there wasn't quite enough room for them all here in the chambers, and they are just relentless in their support of all of these students. I want to give a big thanks to them for their work, including Principal Hook, who I will tell you, Chicago Ag has certainly represented very well in our council. So at this time, I'm actually going to ask four of our advisory members to just share quick words. We are super privileged to have Angel Diaz as a part of our original members of the advisory council, and actually Ariel Gomez is a new member of the council. So I'm going to start and allow them to share some words on their experience.
Good morning, and thank you, Tamara. As one of the original members of the CPS Student Advisory Councils, I am excited to share my comments on this important initiative. I was elected to join the council as a junior in January of last year, and I will remain a member of the council until I graduate this spring. Being a member of this council has enabled me to share my voice on important issues that affect students across the district and help develop solutions to some of those issues. For example, last summer, I worked with the MiGFA Challenge and other students to develop a video to build awareness and advocate for restored justice in schools among principals. This is just one of the several initiatives the Student Advisory Council successfully worked on. Through my various experience as a member of the council, I have also gained valuable leadership and problem-solving skills that are important to my future success. I am excited to welcome the new members of the council and to continue our work to help improve the educational experience of all CPS students. Couple weeks ago, I met the new council with Dr. Barbara Bird Bennett, and I was extremely impressed by the new members, just looking at them and looking at the work that they have done so far, carry on the work that we took last year. It's just amazing, and I'm glad to help out and to continue to help out as a mentor. Thank you.
Hello again. In addition to shadowing the honorary student board member today, I'm also one of the new members of the CPS Student Advisory Council. As a member of the Student Advisory Council, I'm excited to share my voice and play a direct role in approving our school system. We are already off to a strong start with our work. We have developed and fielded a survey with students and staff at our schools to help identify key areas of opportunity to make a difference. I look forward to the work we will do in service to all students of the district.
Ariel, one thing that occurred to me, given that it's Earth Day, can you explain what's the jacket you're wearing and the emblem you have on that some of your colleagues also have on that's actually a lot more prevalent throughout the state and kind of unique in Chicago?
Okay. So it's kind of like our student council. We are part of the National FFA Organization, and so the FFA Organization is a leadership and agriculture kind of organization, and so on our emblem, we have an eagle, this is a corn right here, and then we have a plow and an owl on side. So each element in our emblem, which you could also see on people in the back, on their backs, if you don't know, it kind of just displays our school, well, not the school, but the organization itself. So our organization is based solely on agriculture and leadership. So yeah, that's basically what our...
Thank you.
And we'll have Rayshan Burns and Adalina Sosai. They have a couple words to share as well. It's new members of the council.
Hi, my name is Rayshan Burns, but my friends call me Ray. I'm from Foreman High School, and I'm 17 years old. My favorite hobby would have to be building computers, and I'm happy to be a member of the Student Advisory Council because I've met a lot of people who come from different walks of life than I do, and because of that, I've become a more open-minded person. And Tamara and MiGFA has created challenges for us, I mean, not challenges, opportunities for us that would not have been possible otherwise, like interning in our aldermen's offices, attending Chicago Ideas Week, becoming student judges, all of which have the possibility to positively affect the path of our lives. And I hope to work with you guys to strengthen the student-faculty relationships in CPS. During my time as a member of the Student Advisory Council, I hope to solidify the foundation for the Student Advisory Council, for us and for new members, so that we could all best serve and continuously improve CPS for all stakeholders.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you, Ray.
Hi, I'm Adalina Sosai. I'm a junior at Ricover Naval Academy. I'm grateful to be on the council because I think it gives not only my voice an opportunity to be heard, but also my students, my fellow students from my school, because they're always talking to me about, oh, what about this, what about this? And I'm proud to be a part of this so I can bring their ideas and put mine together and work with my other fellow students in order to improve CPS and to improve the lives of students so that not only we can be happy, but the board can be happy, CPS can be happy. And, you know, when students are happy, they're going to want to learn, and everything is just better. So I hope that with the council and with the help of CPS and the board, we can work together to create a more uniform attendance policy throughout schools because there is so much variation right now. And with that, I think that if we get more students to come, more students to be on time, that'll just improve our environments in school, and learning will be a lot easier. And also, the council has offered me many opportunities that I would have not have gotten a chance to be a part of in any other way, just like Ray had said, the interning, the student voice, student judges, and Chicago Ideas Week. Those are all things that can open doors for us for the future to make sure that we are prepared and ready to make changes and differences in our lives and other people's lives.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tamara, for introducing this wonderful group of students. Thank you for those of you who spoke. Thank you for those of you who spoke on behalf of your colleagues in this endeavor. But most importantly, thank you for your service to us at the board, giving us feedback on student perspective and to the management. It's really appreciated and necessary. And I'm really pleased that the district set this up a couple of years ago to, in fact, make sure that voice is heard both by us and by everyone else. And I'm glad that you're all getting something out of it as well, too. This is really a terrific effort, and we really do appreciate the time. And we know that you have to put in to make us better. You know, all the times teachers are trying to tell you how to get better, this is your chance to tell us how to get better, and we really do appreciate it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Morning, Arthi.
Good morning, and thank you, President Vitale and members of the board. I'm Arthi Dupalia, the Chief of College and Career Success at CPS, and I'm excited to present the next part of honoring excellence. As you know, from science and debate to chess and academic decathlon, CPS students this spring have taken top honors at several competitions throughout the city, throughout the state, and throughout the country. They have represented their school communities with poise and have made our district very proud. Today, we recognize students from five CPS schools, standouts from our recent citywide chess competition. First, I would like to recognize the champion chess team from Lane Tech High School, led by Principal Christopher Dignam and chess coach Robert Bartelt. We congratulate the following students: Philip Aqua, Joshua Njeng, Earl Baker, Eros Garciaus, Jamir Jackson, Jeremy Prince, Julian Gonzalez, Conrad Vergazinia, can you coach me on his name beforehand? Nick Sell, and Nick Sell, on their first-place finish in this competition. And so congratulations to our citywide high school winners from Lane Tech. And at this time, I'd like to ask the Lane Tech students, principal, and coach if any of them would like to say a few words.
First, I would like to say good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I would like to first thank the members of the board for giving us the opportunity to do this, as well as the organizers of the CPS Academic Chess Competition. Our principal, Dr. Dignam, has made significant contributions to our program. Our head coach, Mr. Bartelt, has sacrificed a great deal of his time to give us invaluable training time. Our assistant coach, Lorenzo Aranda, has been a great help in increasing the overall team's strength. And of course, I cannot forget about my wonderful teammates. This year, they've worked really hard, and the results clearly show. So not only have they won the academic chess competition, they've also managed to place tenth at state, the highest of any CPS school. So I'm very honored to work with all these wonderful individuals. And as a graduating senior, I hope that the team not only continues to bring honor to Lane Tech, but to the rest of CPS. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, you want to say anything?
Morning, President Vitale, members of the board, and interim CEO, Mr. Ruiz. We just want to say thank you for recognizing our students. And I also think it's very important to recognize those non-metrics and extracurricular activities that students engage in that really makes the whole school experience very valuable. And you know, as a fellow parent who has children in CPS myself, I find that invaluable. So I just want to say thank you. I'm extremely proud of Mr. Bartelt and our team, and I wish them luck, especially our graduating seniors. Thank you.
And obviously, I'd like to thank all of you here today for honoring us. It's a substantial honor. And I would also like to thank, obviously, Principal Dignam. And I would be remiss if I didn't reserve the highest praise for my players and my former player and now assistant coach, Lorenzo Aranda. They have put in the hours, and it shows in their success. And I can't thank you all enough for having us here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, congratulations again to the Lane Tech team. So next, for our elementary schools, we have four schools we will recognize. Thanks, Lane Tech team. Okay, so first is Josephine Swan, who is representing the Decatur Classical Chess Team on their first-place finish for grades K through two. Second is Philip Kujawa, who is representing Leonard Elementary for their first-place finish in grades K through four. Third, Ryan Wong is representing Skinner North for their first-place finish in grades K through six. And finally, Jeremy Margolin is representing the Academic Center at Whitney Young for their first-place finish in grades K through eight. So congratulations to all our exceptional elementary chess players on their incredible results this year. And at this time, again, I'd like to ask if any of our students or principals or coaches would like to say a few words.
Good morning. My name is Josephine Swan, and I'm a first grader at Decatur Classical School. I would like to thank the board for honoring the kindergarten through second grade team for our win. Thank you, Mrs. K, for opening the doors early on Friday mornings. And Mr. Buckless, for being such a great coach. We will miss you. And also to CPS for bringing chess to our schools. I am proud to accept this award for the team. Thank you again. Have a wonderful day. Go Decatur Dolphins and happy Earth Day.
Thank you so much.
Good morning. My name is Philip Kujawa. Thank you for having me. On behalf of the Leonard Chess Team, I would like to thank Chicago Public Schools for the opportunity to participate in our chess club and multiple tournaments. Under the guidance of our coaches, Mr. Kelly and Mr. Fishbein, we have learned good sportsmanship, camaraderie, and of course, how to play chess. Our team, Nathan Liu, Red Vic Van Eyck, Henry Guo, Kevin Yang, and I are proud to represent Leonard and pleased to have earned the first-place championship for third- and fourth-grade championship in the city chess tournament. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ryan Wong, and I'm a sixth grader at Skinner North Classical. It has been really fun playing for the Skinner North Chess Team and contributing to the city chess championship. I've had a great time hanging out and playing chess with all my friends. When I first started playing chess at Skinner North in first grade, I was the only one playing at tournaments. Now the Skinner North Chess Team has grown over to thirty very lively set of players. I want to thank my dad for starting and leading the chess team and for Principal Nederstrom and Assistant Principal Magnuson for fostering such a great environment to allow the chess team to succeed. I think I could speak for most of the chess team when I say that it has been an amazing experience playing together and even more fun winning the chess championship. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jeremy Margolin, representing the Whitney Young Academic Center Chess Team. And I'd like to thank Mr. Cash for running our chess program and letting us play with the high schoolers on the chess team. It's been a great experience. Dr. Kenner, who's our principal, for her support of our chess team. Gopal Menon, who's a national master who coached our chess team every Tuesday. And he's really helped us all improve. And the high schoolers on the team for playing with us on all of our practices after school and really incorporating us into the team. I'd like to thank CPS for creating and hosting the tournaments and giving kids around the city a chance to enjoy chess. And then finally, I'd like to thank my teammates, Akil Kalgatki, Nikhil Kalgatki, and Eli O'Malley.
Congratulations again. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you all. Thank you all for coming down, and congratulations to every one of you. It's a great accomplishment for you, and I'm glad we have a good program that actually allows you to compete and enjoy and get to know other people. It's really terrific. And thank you very, very much for your comments. I also want to thank Arthi because, you know, we've tried to do a lot of work to improve the chess program in the city, in the schools over the last two or three years. And Arthi has led that effort, and I really appreciate it. I think it's a valuable experience for those of our kids who want to participate, our children who want to participate in the chess. And we're trying to improve that program throughout the city, and we're making great progress. So, Arthi, thank you as well. Appreciate it. So we will now move to the business portion of the meeting. And this morning, we're going to get a brief update on the budgetary outlook and process here at CPS. And our CFO, Ginger Rogers, I think, is going to make that presentation. And while Ginger approaches the microphone, I do want to say thank you to Ginger and her team for all the hard work they've done, not only working on budgetary issues, but also on our financing issues. I'm pleased to say that we, in fact, completed a $300 million financing yesterday, thanks to their hard work. Ginger, congratulations on that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to provide you with a brief update on our financial condition. And first, thank you, President Vitale, for sharing the news that we were able to sell $300 million in fixed-rate bonds yesterday and successfully completed that transaction. As you know, we issue bonds in order to pay for our capital program, to provide air conditioning in our schools, to provide STEM labs, arts, computer science labs, as well as to fix the physical infrastructure, the roofs, the bricks, the masonry of the buildings. So being able to do this bond financing is important to be able to continue to invest in our capital program because it is paying for projects that are already underway. It was a success because we had nearly a hundred investors who were interested in purchasing our bonds. In fact, they were interested in buying more bonds than we had available, about 1.7 times the $300 million that we had offered. And the interest rate was good as well, about 5.5% for the 25-year term of the bonds. This shows that investors do have confidence in CPS and our ability to repay our debt. However, it's no secret that CPS has long faced serious financial challenges, primarily driven by our broken pension system, a system that CPS is the only district in the state that has to pay its own pensions. But yet, we also have to support, taxpayers in Chicago also have to support the statewide teachers' retirement system, so we pay twice for pensions. For fiscal '16, we face a $1.1 billion deficit. That's the year that starts just in a few months, on July 1st. That deficit will only grow into the future. It reflects a reduction in state funding, another cut from the state, which puts us, continues to keep us at funding levels below fiscal 2008 levels. Unfortunately, this is no surprise since Illinois is second-to-last in the country in providing support for K-12 education. The $1.1 billion gap also includes a pension payment of nearly $700 million, nearly three-quarters of what's of our deficit. We've raised this issue before. Pension costs are the single largest driver of our deficit. And again, to reiterate, CPS is the only district in the state that's facing this challenge. The budgets that you've approved in the past several years have cut nearly $740 million out of central office, administration, and operations. But we can't hope to cut our way out of this gap. To bring long-term financial stability to CPS, we must look to Springfield for structural pension solutions and increased revenue in order to continue to fund the programs that we are funding. We continue to advocate for meaningful pension reform in Springfield in order to support the academic and educational gains that we've seen our students achieve, from record graduation rates, increased attendance rate, and test scores. We're working diligently to prepare a financial plan for you for fiscal '16. But ultimately, it will have to wait until we have a better sense of what we can count on from Springfield in order to resolve our $1.1 billion deficit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ginger. Any questions for Ginger at this time?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ginger. Appreciate it. Okay. A few announcements again. I remind everybody that anyone who is interested in scheduling a time block to have office hours with a board member, we are pleased to provide them. You have to call the board office at 773-553-1600. And we welcome seeing you if you care to come and talk to us. Madam Secretary, will you please share the details of the next board meeting?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next board meeting will be held on May 27, 2015, at the CPS Loop Office. Advanced registration will open at 8:00 a.m. on Monday, May 18, 2015, and will close on Friday, May 22, 2015, at 5:00 p.m., or until all slots are filled, whichever is first. If anyone has any questions about the process, please contact the board office for our assistance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Stella. Let's now proceed with today's public participation session. I'm told that Michael Brunson is here from representing the CTU. Michael, if you'd care to speak, please come forward. Two minutes. That's all you got. If you want to make it a minute, we're happy.
No, 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 no. Hey, first of all, let me tell you, I'm not here to talk about the soups fiasco. I'll let you go on that one. But I will say that I'll talk about the $1.1 billion deficit, speaking about the real deficit. You know, if the goal here is to help our students truly realize their potential, we need to block this real deficit that we have. And this real deficit that we have is the reluctance of the board and CPS to work with CTU and the community partners to fight for progressive revenue options and beneficial cost savings. Every year, CPS touts a billion-dollar deficit. And every year, we at CTU push back, and we remind you that it's really a matter of priorities. If we really want a good educational system that supports our students, work with us. We'll show you where the money is. You can declare a TIF surplus. We can work with us to declare a TIF surplus that would bring in tens of millions of dollars. Work with us and go to renegotiate the interest rate swaps that would save hundreds of millions of dollars. Work with us to support a financial transaction tax that would bring in over $10 billion to the state. You know, I got a list right here in my hand of unnecessary contracts that could be cut that would save about $165 million. You can work with me on that. So I'll be brief, and I'll say that, you know, we can work together to stop this annual dance of the deficit because it's not that there is a lack of money. It's that the problem is with the priorities. And we need to focus on the right things, and you need to work with us to go and get that money. Okay?
Thank you for your comments, Michael.
All right. Thank you for your time. Thank you for not making me wait till the last part.
You're totally welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Brunson.
Stella?
Thank you, Mr. President. Before we continue with public participation, Mr. President, I would like to address the audience. Speakers, please listen while I provide directions for public participation. I will call your name and number when it is your turn to speak. When you hear your name, please immediately proceed to the staging area to the left of the podium and check in with a board staff member. Eric, he's to your left. Thank you. You will be lined up in the right order. When it is your turn to speak, proceed to the podium and state your name. After you state your name, I will then start the two-minute clock, which is visible to all in the audience. I would also like to note that there is a timer on top of the podium for the speakers to see. When there are 30 seconds remaining, the color will turn to yellow. And when two minutes are up, the light will turn to red. Please immediately take your seat when your time is up to allow for the next speaker to begin. Also, for anyone who plans to stand in support of a speaker, please be aware that the only walkway in the boardroom is behind the podium. walkway in the boardroom is behind the podium. Therefore, if you would kindly make a single file line and stand as near to the railing as possible, this would allow for people to pass through the area safely. Thank you. And, Mr. President, with that, I will proceed with the speakers list and our first speakers will be from Decatur Classical School. We have two speakers in support and one opposed and the speaker order will be Speaker number eight, Kristen Bokee Graven, followed by Speaker number one, Jeanette Shar, and then Speaker 49, Rob Olmsted, and then followed by Speaker number two, Carrie Murphy, Speaker three, Hu Naijin, and Speaker four, Jen Gilmore. Please state your name.
Good morning. My name is Kristen Bokee Graven and I'm the chairperson of the Decatur Classical Expansion Committee and the vice chair of the LSC. And I'm here today to ask you to fix the broken K through six model, which includes Decatur that ends after sixth grade. At a minimum, CPS needs to clearly articulate the path for students once they leave Decatur because right now it goes something like this. Students receive an excellent classical education from kindergarten through sixth grade, but then they're on their own for seventh and eighth grade when they try to find a spot at another school. First, they'll experience the stress of needing to get all As in fifth grade, needing to score 99% on the NWEA MAP test and needing almost perfect scores on the selective enrollment entrance exam. And if they don't, they'll have to go through the process all over again to get into high school. This is pressure no other CPS student has to face. Now, we've been told that CPS can't give Decatur students special treatment just because the school ends after sixth grade, that it wouldn't be fair to treat Decatur students differently from other CPS students. Well, by that logic, every CPS student at a selective enrollment elementary school should have to retest for entry into seventh grade, which would of course be ridiculous. Now, let me wrap up with a telling statistic. Our CIWP research, which is hot off the presses, shows that more than half of current Decatur families say they want to move their child before sixth grade to avoid having to go through the process of finding a new school. So, more than half of the students at one of Chicago's top elementary schools want out. So, we're asking you to fix this problem and we would like to continue our respectful dialogue and work together to find a solution and do what's best for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beckett.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker, please.
Jeanette Shar. Good morning, President Vitale, Vice President Reese and members of the board. I'm Jeanette Shar, the LSC Chair at Decatur Classical School and the parent of two Decatur students. We have done much to propose and pursue potential solutions in order to expand Decatur to seventh and eighth grade. We created an expansion committee to explore every option. We spoke with and sought support from city and state elected officials. We sought advice and information from CPS officials at the highest levels and we appeared before you in September and November of this school year. And most importantly, when the opportunity arose to explore relocation to, of Decatur to the closed Stewart Elementary School building, we did so with support from Alderman James Kapelman of the 46th Ward. We sought input from the Decatur community and surveyed our parents and staff just this past November and a super majority of 70% favored relocation. So, our LSC members voted to continue to pursue this opportunity. And in response and respect to the small minority of parents who wish to pursue only the possibility of expansion on our current campus, the LSC kept that option in front of CPS as well despite knowing the, this was the most expensive option for a cash-strapped district. President Vitale, this district's master plan states unequivocally, the ideal elementary school model is K through eight. The Decatur community has left no stone unturned to make this rightful expansion to seventh and eighth grades a reality. We look forward to continuing this dialogue with you and the fellow board members and CPS officials, but we do ask you to not delay further action on this matter. We urge you to work with CPS to put forth a formal proposal before this board.
Thank you, Ms. Shar.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please. Rob Olmsted.
Good morning. My name is Rob Olmsted. I'm the parent of a first grader at Decatur Classical Elementary. I'm here because CPS is considering moving Decatur from its present overcrowded location at 7030 North Sacramento to the former Stewart Elementary location in Uptown. The move, as she said, would allow the school to add seventh and eighth graders. I'm here to ask the board first not to permit this move and second, no matter what you decide, please decide quickly so that parents can begin planning their children's educational future. I oppose the move to Stewart because it would move children from a location where shootings are virtually unheard of to a location where they happen with alarming regularity. The board has before it, or should have, a comparison of gun crimes for the two school locations. The data show that near Decatur, in approximately the last decade, there were two aggravated batteries with a firearm. Near Stewart, there were 76. Just one week ago today, a 24-year-old woman, Jennifer Ponton, died after being shot directly in front of Stewart Elementary at Sunnyside and Broadway, steps away from where the playground, from the playground where children would have recess. While that did not occur during school hours, the data you have show that a significant portion of shootings in the Uptown area do occur during school hours. It is not lost on me that many Chicago children attend schools in neighborhoods more dangerous than Uptown. I, and I'm sure everyone on this board, would change that if we could. You have shown that with the Safe Passage Program. But the fact that a significant portion of children face greater danger in other locations does not mean it is okay for this board to remove children from relative safety and actively put them in harm's way. Additionally, CPS's own figures show it would take 12 to 13 million dollars to get Stewart ready to house students again. With this system teetering on bankruptcy, the optics of this board giving money to a privileged selective enrollment school while closing schools in poor neighborhoods would be disastrous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olmsted.
Thank you. I would, I would just state to all members of the Stewart community, we appreciate your bringing your points of view, the Decatur community, bringing your points of view before us again. You know that we are aware of the situation. Coming up with a solution is obviously complicated. We always have different points of view within the community itself and we also have financial issues that we have to deal with. But I do want you to know we recognize it and we'll continue to work as aggressively as we can to come up with a solution.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Jen Kilgore and I have been involved with Chicago Public Schools for over three decades. First, as a kid, growing up in the 80s in Hyde Park, I went to Ray Elementary and Kenwood Academy. In the aughts, I worked as a lead literacy teacher where I got to work with schools all around the district where my home base was at Mitchell Elementary, a school that has gone from good to great through the efforts of existing families, staff members and parents. And I currently am a parent of a second grader at Gerda Elementary School and I'm on the LSC Board. I am here to state unequivocal support for our district-run schools and to request a moratorium on expanding charter schools. Now, first of all, as President Vitale mentioned in the beginning, I know that we all here care about our kids and I am not here to bash existing charters. I know we have folks here from Noble. My kids at Mitchell used to go to Noble. I know it was a great experience. There are good and troubled schools in both district-run and charter schools. I am concerned about a two-system model, one that is, that divides us. Public education should not be a marketplace, it should not be a competition, it should not favor those who have family, social, cognitive, health, financial, even greater transportation resources. We need to be united. I know this is a little hokey. I used to be an elementary school teacher, so just work with me. Our district-run schools can and should be unbelievable. Other parents will speak to that. I can speak to my principal's unbelievable efforts to work against all odds and barriers with increasing, decreasing budgets every year. We are neighborly, children can walk and bike to school and be active, which is necessary after sitting down for seven and a half hours a day, despite the best efforts of our teachers. Public schools, district-run schools can be innovated, we are tested, we are equitable, we accept all children. And district-run schools, a public school system should be a democratic foundation.
Thank you, Ms. Kilgore.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker, please.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm an elected LSC parent rep.
Can you please state your name, please?
Oh, sorry. My name is Carrie Murphy.
Thank you.
I'm an elected LSC parent rep at Dever Elementary. As you are aware, I have been here before to discuss the overcrowding at Dever, but today I am here to discuss the wonderful things happening at the school despite severe overcrowding and other top-down mandates the school has no control over. Dever is a school where my kids are valued and their relationships with teachers are strong. The dedicated lunchroom staff serves, serves hot lunches and cold breakfast to the students every day, even though our lunchroom is understaffed. The school stays relatively clean thanks to the school staff and parent volunteers who step up in the absence, absence of enough custodians. We find creative ways to keep up with the unfunded mandates handed down by the Board of Ed. The wonderful administration and staff have worked hard to obtain the creative school certification even though they wheel the music and art classes around on carts. A dance instructor now leads class in the multipurpose room to fulfill the unfunded PE requirement at the same time and in the same room as our kids are eating their lunch. The school has recess to fulfill the unfunded recess mandate in an unfenced-in concrete area. Thankfully, as of yet, no child has been hit by a car. We now have three kindergarten classrooms of 30 kids each with no classroom assistants to fulfill the unfunded full-day kindergarten program. Dever lost the funding for all our after-school programs this year, so we dipped into our school budget to offer at least some of the after-school programs for our students. As you can see, the decisions made by our administration and staff are in the best interests of the children and Dever should be held up as an example of the kind of school model that should be replicated in other neighborhood schools. It's time for the mayor to hit the reset button and approve policies that lift our district schools up, not bring us down. Stop destabilizing neighborhood schools by shifting dollars over to privately run charter and contract schools. We have done our part at the school level. Now, please do yours. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dever? Ms. Dever? I mean, Ms. Murphy. I'm sorry, I was thinking Dever. Murphy, you know, not, not right at this moment, but if you would somehow communicate to us what you think are unfunded mandates, I'd like to know what your list is. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I think I read them out, that it's the recess, it's the...
I would ask you to, or maybe you can communicate with staff, I'd just like to look at what you think are unfunded mandates if I could.
Sure.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. As the next speaker approaches, Ms. Naijin, the next speaker then will be Speaker number five, Lynn Ankeny, followed by number six, Hannah Hayes, number seven, Charlie Weisong, and number nine, Jenny Biggs, please. Can you please state your name?
Yes, my name is Hu Wen and I'm a proud parent at Gerda Elementary. We've been there since 2010 and I'm here today to also urge you all to support our district-run schools. I have two daughters, a first and a second grader, and they love going to school. And why wouldn't they? The sense of community and connection that permeate our school is grounding, it's comforting and it's nurturing. And those are elements that are absolutely necessary, obviously, and conducive to learning. Our faculty and staff continue to provide this environment, even when the roofs are leaking and the hallways are filled with buckets to catch the rainwater. And even though we have an annex that was in fact, it's in fact a temporary building that was built 30 years ago and meant to only last for 10 years before being replaced by a permanent annex, which we're still waiting for, our staff and administrators are able to make an overcrowded space an actual haven for over 800 kids. So, I'm here again to tell you that despite the flawed policies and the corrupt culture, our district-run school continues to flourish. In spite of the massive budget cuts in 2012, our school managed to renovate our dilapidated schoolyard through the Illinois Green Infrastructure Grant, which was written by a couple of dedicated parents, and they had the unyielding support of a community. So, since day one of preschool, one of the most invaluable tools that my daughters have been shown is the powerful tool of resolving conflicts. The prevalent will of choice that are in all the classrooms reinforces our school-wide policy of filling buckets rather than dipping buckets. Teaching our children empathy, self-control, self-regulation and accountability are integral to our curriculum, which are principles that we all, including members of the Board of Education, could use and be schooled in. So, my daughters, they've developed a joy of learning, okay, and the familial and communal relationships that they develop with our teachers and our students. When I drop them off, I know for the next seven hours, they're going to be inspired and required to be great students, great friends.
Thank you, Ms. Naijin. Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker, please. Thank you.
Good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to speak about my passion for my neighborhood school and how I believe CPS has an opportunity to strengthen our city through stronger support of district-run schools, specifically neighborhood schools. I'd be remiss in my testimony today if I didn't acknowledge my unyielding support and love for my neighborhood school is in spite of the ongoing challenges we parents face against a district that is fraught with controversy and has a seeming propensity towards privatizing our public schools. As I said, my name is Lynn Ankeny and I live in Old Irving Park. My son and daughter attend our neighborhood school, Belding. I've served on the LSC since 2007 and I co-founded Friends of Belding. In short, I not only drink the Belding Kool-Aid, I help make it. At the risk of sounding immodest, you want more parents like me across a CPS. Why? Because I'm never moving and I'm committed to making my neighborhood school, Belding, the best it can be. But the truth is, I had a vested interest before my kids attended and I want to see it thrive long after my kids have graduated. All residents have skin in the game, either directly or indirectly, when it comes to their neighborhood CPS. And that's my point. There is an inextricable link between our neighborhood schools and the communities they serve. Show me a thriving neighborhood school and I'll point to an influx of families, rising home values and real estate listings touting that local CPS. Unfortunately, the reverse is true. We all know schools are a major reason families with children approaching school age flee Chicago and head for the suburbs. Give parents a reason to stay in the city. There are many other buildings across Chicago, as you've heard today, and there can be many more if CPS would wise up and realize our world-class city's strength is through the patchwork of diverse, vibrant neighborhoods. And no neighborhood will prosper without a strong neighborhood school at the heart of that community. So, here's my pitch. Neighborhood schools matter. Invest in district-run neighborhood schools and you're going a long way to strengthening the communities they reside and most importantly, attracting and retaining those families who have the motivation and power to make that school the anchor of their community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ankeny. Our next speaker, please.
My name is Hannah Hayes and I'm standing here with Joy Clendenning. We're also here to speak in support of our neighborhood and district schools. They do amazing things for our children despite the, the policies and the corrupt culture that has brought chaos to the system recently. My son graduated from Whitney Young High School last year and our kids attended Ray, Ray School in Hyde Park for eight years, including kindergarten and pre-K. I just returned yesterday from visiting my son who is at Bard College in New York and he is thriving in his freshman year and I wanted to know what he took away from his CPS experience and from going to neighborhood schools and how prepared he felt. And without skipping a beat, he told me I had great teachers. Quote, "They saw me for who I was and they figured out the best path for me." His teachers did not get this information from test scores. I know that they knew how to reach him because they are trained educators and because they cared. The hard-working educators and staff at our district schools need equitable funding and they deserve our respect and support because they do tremendous work despite the bad rap they get sometimes from, from the system. For example, at Ray School, we had a librarian who noticed my son liked to read newspapers, so she bought him a subscription to the Tribune. When he misplaced library books, she didn't punish him, she made him an organizer to put over the back of his chair, so he had a special place for the books he loved so much. At Whitney Young, when he was in seventh grade, I got a call from the counselor after we had a death in the family. She called me to let me know that he was struggling and that she was working with his teachers to make sure he wasn't overwhelmed. My son also mentioned the teacher at Whitney Young's Writing Center, who was tremendously helpful with his college essay senior year. Librarians, counselors, reading and writing specialists, these are considered support services and treated as extras and they're often the first to go in a budget crisis. But my son is where he is today because of these people. His teachers...
Ms. Hayes, Ms. Hayes, thank you. Thank you for your comments.
We need equitable funding in our district schools so every family has the choice of equality neighborhood schools.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Good morning. I'm Charlie Weisong. I'm a special education attorney with Equip for Equality. It's a disability rights nonprofit based here in Chicago and we provide supports for students with disabilities, including information, training and free legal services. I'm here this morning because next month you will be asked to vote on whether 34 charter schools in Chicago are reauthorized. For this vote, we have compiled information about these schools and their record on students with disabilities, which we have sent to CPS leadership, as well as you last month. You should be getting a copy of our letter, it looks like, now. Before you vote, I just want to call your attention to the fact that some of these schools require an academic test, transcripts or letters of recommendation to get in, even though the law says they should be admissions by lottery only. A few of the... A few of the schools lose students with disabilities at twice the rate of their non-disabled peers, and a few schools still under-enroll students with disabilities by as much as fifty percent. You've also probably read that charter schools as a whole expel students at ten times the rate of CPS. And I want to add this morning, based on CPS data, that falls even more disproportionately on students with disabilities than it does in CPS. And I'm not here to oppose charter schools. Equip for Equality does not oppose charter schools. We work with many families actually who love their charter school and who are having a very successful experience. We know you think carefully about this issue, but we're calling your attention to some of this information to help you be a strong authorizer and to see where there are problems that can be addressed, to make sure every school is a strong school. So I ask before you vote to see how CPS management is investigating these findings. I ask that you make sure we stop some unlawful enrollment practices before you reauthorize the schools, and that you make sure schools are thinking seriously about school discipline and not using exclusionary discipline policies. Before you cast your vote, please do get the information you need. I'd be happy to speak with you or the CPS management more, and make sure that the needs of students with disabilities are being addressed before you reauthorize these particular batch of schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weisong. As the next speaker approaches the podium, I will call Cory Fryer, Speaker number ten, Speaker number eleven, Marlene Jenkins, Speaker twelve, Louis Peister, and Speaker thirteen, please, Erica Clark. Please state your name.
Sure. I'm Jenny Biggs from Raise Your Hand. Good morning. I am a proud parent of three students in a district-run school. Raise your hand stands in support of the parents who are here today to tell you about the great things happening at their very own district-run school, despite policies that have been enacted over the past four years by this Board of Ed to weaken them. Parents, teachers, students, and principals across this district do remarkable things every day while dodging bad decisions from central office and an ongoing culture from the top that does more to drag us down than support us. Today, we submitted an infographic regarding empty charter seats. Using data from the 2014-15 school year, we found that there are currently twelve thousand six hundred and thirty-seven empty seats in existing charter schools based on the CPS threshold for ideal enrollment. This equates to sixty-four schools or fifty percent of Chicago charter schools. Continuing to rapidly expand charters at a time of fiscal crisis and declining enrollment starves existing schools of needed resources. The money and students are not there to justify charter expansion. You have approved the opening of almost as many charters and contract schools as you closed two years ago. The number-one type of school with waiting lists in Chicago are magnet schools with over ninety-nine thousand applications each year, according to WBEZ data. Parent decisions clearly are not what's driving the decisions to open more charter schools. The mayor said he wants to hit the reset button. We hope that means he will instruct you, his hand-picked board, to stop the cycle of financial abuse and start investing in what we have instead of opening new schools at a time when we are broke and our district has the lowest enrollment in decades. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Biggs. Our next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Cory, Cory Fryer. Good morning, Board, President, Board Members, students, staff, teachers that are present. I'm a parent professional as well as a Charter Parent United rep. I'm here on a twofold mission, one as a parent and two as an employee. As a parent, I take delight in watching my children's eyes light up when they learn something new at school, from rolling numbers to writing race responses, to books that they have read, even learning about how plants respond to the environment. My children feel safe at our school. Our school displays a warm, orderly, and caring environment. When I spend time with them, they're always eager to say their homeroom chant, or even tell me their Basil scholarly traits: responsibility, compassion, perseverance, diligence, respect, and integrity. Now, as a CPS, CICS employee, Basil, we are committed to greatness and believe every child can learn. Our goal is to meet the unique needs of every scholar that we work with in order to ensure that they make the most growth possible. Our team works to identify each scholar's area of need, set individualized goals for them, and work relentlessly toward those goals. Now, at Basil, we utilize systems and routines that create a productive environment and maximize learning time for each scholar. We are proud of the tremendous growth our school has made over the last three years, which has elevated us to a Level One CPS rating. We thank you for having us part of the solution of school choice. Thank you much.
Thank you, Mr. Fryer.
Thank you, Mr. Fryer. Our next speaker, please, Marlene Jenkins. Last call. Moving on to the next speaker then, Speaker number twelve, Louis Peister, please.
Louis Peister, retiree and longtime observer of this board. First of all, the law prior to 1995 Amendatory Act, which allowed the mayor to appoint you guys, all right, provided that the LSEs make recommendations to the mayor, and then from those recommendations, he makes the appointment with the school board, excuse me, the city council, signing off on that. Elected mayor, elected LSEs, elected city council. I would suggest, without changing the law, if and when there are vacancies up there, the mayor look at the LSEs as a potential way of thinking about who should be the replacements. I'm not urging any replacements, but when that happens, okay? The second thing is, I've watched this, sometimes I could call it a show. You have people getting up here and talking about issues in which you need, they could call the CEO, or the board staff, and other people, including you guys, to say, hey, we got a problem at this school, and I think you need to put some staff member or in charge of getting this input, so we don't have this. And if you guys don't do anything, then come up here and rip you up, all right? The third thing is, we had the Principals Association making statements about the twenty, excuse me, the two-hundred dirty buildings. Well, if they were dirty, they were dirty for months. Why wasn't someone up here talking about that instead of waiting?
Mr. Peister, thank you for your comments.
All right. My point is-
Thank you, Mr. Peister.
Is that the pro?
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Did y'all have a letter I turned in this morning?
No.
Please state your name.
No.
She's distributing it. You could state your name.
Good morning. My name's Erica Clark. I'm a CPS parent, and I'm with Parents for Teachers. You're getting a letter here from us that invites you all and other representatives of the district to attend three public forums, at which we would like you to openly discuss the issues at stake in the current talks with the CTU over the new contract. We're also submitting this letter to officials of the CTU. We hope to bring you all together and have a dialogue about what's at stake in our schools. As you know, the CTU has very publicly announced what it would like to see in the new contract. They want things like limits on class size, more counselors, social workers, nurses in our schools, an end to standardized testing for our youngest children. These are things that parents also want for our schools, but there's been a wall of silence from you all about what you would like to see in the new contract. As you know, public trust in this district is at an all-time low right now. The scandals we heard about today, every day, we read something new in the newspaper, and you have zero credibility among the parents, the teachers, and the school, and the students that the schools serve. We think engaging in this type of dialogue with us would go a long way to rebuilding that credibility. You know, it's often said that sunshine is the best disinfectant. Well, let me tell you, this district is in need of some serious disinfecting. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Speaker number fourteen, please, Patrice Hunter, followed by Speaker fifteen, Mica Battle, followed by Speaker sixteen, Tracy Talmage, and Speaker seventeen, Ronald Jackson. Patrice Hunter, last call. Moving on to the next speaker, Mica Battle, last call. Our next speaker, please, Tracy Talmage.
Good morning, Board members. My name is Tracy Talmage. I am a mother of two daughters that attend public charter schools. Thank you. My oldest daughter is Butler College Prep, attends CICS Prairie. I feel very fortunate to be able to choose where they attend school. When she was in grade school, she struggled. I found that she not only had a difficult time academically, but she was distracted. I got to the point where there was, she was being passed along from grade to grade without being challenged. On several occasions, I advocated for support to no avail. I began to feel that no one cared. I knew I had to do something. When she reached the fifth grade, I decided to put her in a public charter school. Her grades began to improve, and her ability to focus increased. She went from getting Cs and Ds to earning As and Bs. When time came for her to go to high school, I knew that I would, she would not thrive in our neighborhood school. One day, Butler visited her school. I decided to attend an information session, and I immediately knew that was a school for- Butler offers smaller classes and teachers to have more time to work with each student. They needed a strong culture that would help her stay focused and mature. She currently is a sophomore, and she has grown so much. She is excited about going to college, and she has become a very responsible young lady. I too have grown as a result of Butler College Prep. I serve on the Parent Advisory Council as a treasurer. I have helped plan engagement activities, spoken with my elected officials in Springfield, and worked to bridge the gap between parents and schools to ensure everyone feels connected and supported. I am grateful for the opportunity to work so closely with Butler. My children are living evidence that every child can succeed. Student leaders at Butler College Prep are excelling in math, science, and reading. Thank you for ensuring quality options for our children.
Thank you, Ms. Talmage. As the next speaker approaches, we will then have Speaker number eighteen, Designated Speaker for Sarah Goodstem, followed by the other Designated Speaker, Cecilia James, Speaker thirty-five, as well as Speaker fifty-six, Inez Hernandez, please. Please state your name.
Ronald Jackson. Well, I'm gonna say the best man did not win, and contrary to Mr. Bronson, I'm not gonna be nice to this boy. The bottom line is scandal's been going on in CPS for a number of years. Plus, the twenty million dollars could have had used to hire teachers with these no-bid contracts that you're giving out like chicken nuggets at Burger King. It's a shame that you, Mr. Vatalo, is not also being investigated by the FAS, and it's a shame. Contrary to belief, you, Mr. Vatalo, as well as Ronald Manuel, did not throw Barbara Bird Bennett under the bus. What you did, you got in there and drove over her. That's what you did. And it's a shame that you're allowed, this board is allowed to get away with scandal, manslaughter, and other charges, and it's a shame that you got so much clout that you work with these banks to refuse to help get these deals reversed or anything. You sit there like it's no deal, but you know what? Sooner or later, you're gonna have to come down and meet your maker when you be putting on that orange uniform, because don't think that you're not going down. Don't think they're not gonna look at you sooner or later, that you're going up the river too. So I hope you can keep that smile on your face, Mr. Vatalo. And it's a shame the way you do the kids in the Chicago Public School, and you have no remorse. None of y'all have no remorse. No remorse at all. You have kids who get bullied, who take their lives, and you see no evidence in that. I challenge you to tell me I'm lying. You or your law department. I challenge either one of you. You're talking about safe pastures. There's no safe pasture. Go on Sixty-third in the evening when these kids go out of school. Go up on Thirty-Fifth when these kids get out of school, and you're talking about it's a safe pasture. That's no more than a baloney, and you know it as well as anyone else. The next child that passed away is gonna be on each one of you board members' heads because none of you seems to care. And oh, Ms. Zop, the word on the street, you planning on running for Congress? I'm gonna be right there to make sure you don't be a member. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please, Tina Barrett. Please state your name.
Tina Barrett. My son no longer attends Good. He transferred at the beginning of the semester. Why? Because he was miserable. You lied. You told me these would be the best years of my life, and they aren't. I hated here, he cried out one day during a heated conversation earlier this year. You will never understand how heartbreaking that moment was for me. His is not an isolated case. Children are transferring out of Good in record numbers because they no longer have faith in the school's ability to deliver the quality education they were promised. Goodstem Academy is a nice, new, clean, state-of-the-art building with stark white walls, quiet hallways, and classrooms, and a brand-new Olympic-sized pool that no one has ever been in. And the classrooms are filled with unhappy students and teachers that feel they have no voice. Good has a Gestapo-like administration that neither hears nor cares about the concerns of its students, teachers, or parents. They treat Good more like a juvenile detention center, a place they go for their shift. They just need to keep the children in line and under control for a few hours, then they can go and collect their five-to-six figure income while our children barely get an education. We have students currently sitting in what is supposed to be Spanish and music classrooms that have never had a teacher. They are literally watching movies on Netflix during class time. Is this the P-Tech experience that President Obama wanted for our kids? We have had former alderman Lana Lane, Mayor Mark Emanuel, Senator Dick Durbin, the CEO of Google there for photo ops and sound bites on multiple occasions, but have anyone stopped to ask, is this working? Your website says the Chicago Board of Education is responsible for the governance, organizational, and financial oversight of the Chicago Public Schools. So I pose a question to the board. Who exactly should we be holding responsible?
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Our next speaker, please, Mrs. Hymus. Please state your name.
My name is Cecilia Hymus. Good morning, Board members. I'm a parent of the twins at Sarah Goodstem Academy, and I'm also the Parent Advisory Council Chairperson. I'm here today to convey a condensed version of the handout that was provided to you this morning. But first, I want to thank Network Chief Fran DeSegar for listening to parents who have reached out to her regarding a lot of these, all of these concerns, and she has taken a vested interest and is working with us to correct some of these situations, but some of them probably don't have remediation. We have a co-leadership structure that lacks accountability. Parents and students do not know who leads the school. We have been denied the internal financial records for the school for the last three years. We have music and language classes without teachers. We have juniors, their parents and students were forced into an online language class that begins on April twenty-seventh. Now, we are well into the second quarter, despite their full opposition. Juniors are scared of not graduating and have left at the end of the first quarter, and I'm sorry, the first semester in January, and many students are now leaving at the end of June and not returning in September. Students do not have access to full-time social workers, not even one. She comes in once a week, every other week. Teachers have not been properly evaluated, and they want to be evaluated. And in the interest of time, we, the parents, the students, the teachers, we urge you to grant us an emergency LSC at Goodstem Academy, as well as take the appropriate steps to remove interim principal Mathew O'Marty and his assistant principal, Bria Stevenson, because after three years, and after careful consideration of all of their actions and inactions, in their position, it is evident that they do not have the students' best interest at heart. They have set them up for failure.
Thank you, Ms. Hymus. As the next speaker approaches, they will be followed by Speaker number nineteen, please, Arnie Steiber. Speaker number twenty, Jeanne Hinson. And then the Designated Speakers, please, for the Alfred Noble School, will be Speaker number twenty-eight, Elva Velazquez, followed by the other Designated Speaker, Martha Casas. Please state your name.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Inez Hernandez. Vengo a pedir ayuda para nuestra escuela y nuestros hijos. Necesitamos información en español, ya que la escuela no ofrece ningún documento en español. La escuela tiene tres años y nunca se ha usado la alberca preciosa que tenemos. Queremos que ya se pueda usar la alberca, y urge maestros para enseñar español y mandarín para que nuestros hijos puedan alcanzar sus créditos que necesitan. No queremos que las clases sean por línea. También queremos que la escuela se una con los parques de Chicago. Recordemos que la inversión que hagamos ahora con nuestros jóvenes vale la pena porque son el futuro de este gran país. Gracias.
Gracias.
Inez Hernandez, she represents Sarah Goodstem Academy. I am asking for help for the school and the children. We need information in Spanish because the school doesn't provide documents in Spanish to the parents. The school is three years old now, but it has a beautiful pool that never has been used. We need teachers of Spanish and Mandarin language. We don't want to, the students receive online classes. We want the school to partner with Chicago Public Parks, and we think this is an investment that is worth it because our children are the future of this great country. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Please state your name.
Hi there. Excuse me. My name is Arnie Steiber. I'm a grandfather, retired CEO- I'm a grandfather, retired CEO, and an Army infantry veteran from the U.S. War against the people of Vietnam. I'm here to you, I'm here today to speak to you about education, not militarization. These words, education, not militarization, are the focus of a Veterans for Peace Initiative to generate dialogue in Chicago and across the nation on the epidemic of militarization in our schools and thus in the lives of our children. The military model is conflict resolution by violence. I'll say that again. The military model is conflict resolution by violence. When good people are trained to do bad things, they will do bad things. Our children are no different. Get your Chicago Public Schools, with the full support of Rahm Emanuel, is teaching the military model to over ten thousand children, making CPS the most militarized school system in the nation. It has been said that children do better academically in military academies than in a military environment. Children do better when they are given opportunities, resources, and recognition in any environment. Science, poetry, a traditional classroom. Opportunities, resources, and recognition are the keys, not militarism. Search on the words "education, not militarization." Check our Facebook page at Demilitarize CPS. The military model is detrimental to children, to this nation, and by the way, since it's Earth Day, also to this earth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiber. Our next speaker, please, Jeanne Hisson. Last call. Moving on to the next group of speakers then would be the speakers from Alfred Noble, designated speakers, please. Twenty-eight, Elva Velazquez. Please state your name.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Elva Velazquez. Soy miembro del Concilio Escolar Alfred Noble. Estoy aquí para exigirles para nuestra, para nuestra escuela, un anexo para, para nuestros estudiantes, un elevador para las personas discapacitadas. Nuestra escuela necesita reglos estructural por dentro y por fuera, ya que cuando llueve tenemos liqueos. Un espacio para nuestros niños con educación especial. Queremos una escuela digna y segura para nuestros estudiantes. Gracias.
Elva Velazquez, she's a LSC member of Alfred Noble School. I have a petition, an annex for the school, for the school. We need an elevator for people with disabilities. The building needs repairs inside, outside. We need a space for children with special education, and we want, in fact, a respectable and safe school for all our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please, Ms. Martha Casas, por favor.
Buenos dias. Soy la señora Martha Casas, y pertenezco también al comité de padres de la escuela Alfred Noble. Queremos también recalcar que como es un edificio, nuestra escuela, que tiene más de cien años, necesita una reestructuración. Como decía mi compañera, necesitamos un acceso para niños con necesidades especiales en el aprendizaje, como deshabilidades en su cuerpo físicamente. Y también queremos agregar que necesitamos el apoyo de, de este board para apoyar a nuestra escuela, para ser reconocida, porque somos una escuela que somos, que estábamos en un tercer nivel educativo, pero ahora estamos en un primer nivel educativo.
Mrs. Martha Casas is also a member of the LSC. She is asking for support, more space, better conditioning in the building. The building of the school is a hundred years old now, so they are asking for new classrooms, an annex with better air conditioning, and also a special support from the board for the school, because the school has improved and it went to a third-level school to be a number-one level at this moment. Thank you.
Señora Casas, vamos a investigar y visitar la escuela y vamos a comunicar con ustedes para ver qué podemos hacer.
Gracias, y esperemos que sí nos hayan escuchado.
Seguro.
Thank you. Please state your name.
Hello. My name is Lori Veets, and I am the proud parent of three children who attend Beard Elementary School. Beard School is a specialty Chicago Public School, district-funded, that services students with special needs from pre-K to third grade. My three-and-a-half-year-old girl-boy twins are part of pre-K in the Ready to Learn program, receiving special services through an IEP for developmental delay. My oldest child is six years old, and he is autistic, and was blessed with the opportunity to attend Beard for two years of pre-K and is now in kindergarten. As I was staring at my computer screen, trying to decide how to make everyone understand how truly life-changing this public school is to my family and so many others, my Facebook feed was blowing up with more and more stories of corruption and scandal and conflict of interest, and it was overwhelming. And it kinda got, made me wanna just kind of give up and go to bed. Then I thought, no, we need these positive stories more than ever. We need people to know that despite all the negative, soul-sucking garbage that is coming out of Chicago, and all the political trash talk against teachers and Chicago Public Schools, there are incredible public schools in CPS. In the case of Beard, we are blessed with amazing, brilliant, kind, creative, wonderful teachers and staff who have made it their life's work to educate, inspire, and protect children with special needs. Each and every child in their classroom has unique challenges, and these people work hard to figure out the right technique to reach them. They go above and beyond every day. I am so thankful for them and what they do for my kids. To see my autistic son learning to read and write and do math is life-changing. To see him play Five Oranges in the school play of The Very Hungry Caterpillar, it made me cry. I love our school. I am so grateful for the funding that makes such a magical place possible. I am terrified that when the budgets come out in June that we'll be decimated. We can't let that happen. Two minutes is not enough time for you to know Beard. So please accept my invitation from myself and my children to come and visit.
Thank you, Ms. Veets.
You will be inspired, and I think you could use a little inspiration right now. Thank you.
Coming to you.
Our next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Carla Holcomb. I am the LSC chairperson at Peterson, and I'm also part of the school's eighth-grade fundraising team, trip, fundraising trip, whatever it is. I know you have a lot of huge issues today, and so I'm almost embarrassed to bring this one to you, but I need your help. The Peterson School eighth graders have raised several thousand dollars to take a field trip that previous Peterson eighth-grade classes have done. They would like to go to a ropes course for a day of team building. And we, as their parents, as well as their eighth-grade teachers, are excited to support that choice, as doing low- and high-ropes courses also gives our children a wonderful social-emotional learning experience as they confront their fears in a safe and supportive environment. The ropes course that was chosen for the field trip is a CPS-approved vendor and has been used by Peterson before for ropes course field trips. They have an excellent safety record with over ten thousand people attending the ropes courses every year. I personally have done ropes courses, and I have to say that it was a lifelong learning experience for me. The eighth-grade field trip was initially approved by CPS, so the school reserved the buses, cut a PO, put in a deposit to hold the date with Covenant Harbor, the ropes course vendor. However, the field trip permission was later denied by the CPS Risk Department. The stated reason for the late denial of the field trip is that CPS does not carry insurance for students to attend ropes courses. One of Peterson's eighth-graders, teachers stated, "I am somewhat surprised that CPS would reject the best team-building event we have ever done. This was extremely disappointing to me. The eighth-grade field trip to a ropes course was a field trip that had been taken in the past and that was scheduled with a CPS-approved vendor. In talking to Covenant Harbor, I also discovered that five CPS charter schools go there every year, including this year, to do the ropes course, and some have already gone this year. I'm here today to ask the board to investigate why CPS charter schools are allowed to do an outdoor education field trip that includes the same ropes course that our students want to do, and it's a neighborhood school. If there's an insurance issue rather than denying the field trip, we would also like to understand if an insurance rider could be purchased to allow the field trip, which Peterson has done in the past, to take place in June. I'm here today because..."
Thank you, Ms. Holcomb. Thank you.
Ms. Holcomb. Tim, would you, would you talk to Mr. Colley so we can get to the bottom of this, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speaker, please. Can you please state your name?
Good morning. My name is Robert Antanson, proud father of two daughters, students at CPS.
Mr. Antanson, can you just speak into the mic?
Speak a little bit more into the...
Thank you.
Also a member of LSC at Dirksen Elementary. First, let me say that I'm thrilled of DA's present at CPS and urge them not to leave until they do some inquiries at the school's level for budget procedure, dubious accounting, consulting contracts, fraud, and petty theft from needy families. Today, I'm here to present a much more personal pain. A year and a half ago, my two kids, along with sixty other students, were physically abused by a teacher, being kept in brutal minus thirty-five degrees without winter coats on them. I complained to the principal verbally. Arrogantly, the principal condoned teacher's action and asked me to complain in writing. I did, through an email. I CC'd that to network office. I got no answer, only tacit, complacent, condoning acts. Unfortunately, my four-year-old got the same nefarious teacher at pre-K. Last fall, daily, my four-year-old came home tormented, crying, bullied constantly with various, I'm sorry for emotions, various means remarks from the teacher with serious concussions, with full knowledge of the teacher and no medical assistance nor parent notification. You have details fully documented in the package I handed you out. Dear panel, I came to ask why such behavior is condoned by the network and especially principal? Why a bullying teacher is allowed by CPS to harm my children? I'll take your answer in writing, please, as soon as possible, because as we speak, my four-year-old daughter is denied access to a free-of-bullying school environment for the past four months, and I'm getting a daily harassing robocalls from CPS.
Thank you, Mr. Antanson.
Thank you for your attention.
Antanson, would you talk to Ms. Coulson over there about this matter?
Help me out.
Thank you, Ms. Antanson.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Last call for Jotun Byrd. Moving on to Speaker Forty-One, please, Tamika Holt.
De'Ande Brown Whitfield. Last call. After Speaker Number Forty-four, then, we will have Speaker Forty-Five, Rosita Chatonda, followed by Speaker Forty-Six, Brian Mullins, and then Speaker Forty-Seven. Please state your name.
Good morning, Estella. My name is De'Ande Brown Whitfield. Good morning, Board of Directors and Staff. I'm truly inspired by our Cardinal George. I'm just taking a moment. Through him and Father Flager, I'm encouraged for forgiveness. And the reason I'm saying that is because I was truly inspired this morning when I saw the young people. And if what we're doing here, when we come here, is about the young people, I think that we need to keep the young people in mind with everything that we do. I have been volunteering for you all for forty years now, since my freshman year of high school, and I've seen the ups and downs and all in between. But today, when I watch the young people, and our student board member over there, and the shadow student, I am inspired. I feel hopeful. Many years ago, I encouraged and supported your alumni, Ronnie Mosley, who was on Rahm Emanuel's team. And I've watched him grow from a high school student to a college student and community activist advocate, and I commend you for the work that you do. I'm here today because I wasn't able to continue what I was gonna say last month, which is we are celebrating one-hundred-and-ninety-seven years of freedom in the state of Illinois. Last week, I had the honor of doing a Celebrating Freedom Program at Northeastern Illinois University. A lot of times, we look at our flag, our state of Illinois flag, and we don't even pay attention to it. It was in eighteen-eighteen, April eighteenth, eighteen-eighteen, that Illinois was accepted into the Union. And therefore, we need to be celebrating Emancipation Day in the state of Illinois all around. So three years from now will be two-hundred years of freedom, and I wanted to make certain that I let our young people know that you are free until you do something or commit a crime that takes away your freedom.
Thank you, Ms. Brown Whitfield.
And that's what June thinks about.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please, Rosita Chatonda. Last call. Next speaker, Brian Mullins. Last call. Moving on to Speaker Forty-Seven, please, Nancy Hudsbyth. Please state your name.
Nancy Hudsbyth. I'm here representing the local school council of Northside Learning Center with Julie Donahue and Maria Gandara. I came here today because I want to talk about a wonderful school and a program that is making a huge difference in the lives of high school students with special needs and disabilities. Northside Learning Center is a specialty high school for kids with cognitive disabilities like my nineteen-year-old son. It offers community-based instruction in vocational and life skills. What this means is that the students do not sit in self-contained classrooms. They go out into the community every single day. Kids like my son learn by doing. My son is learning job skills at an Olive Garden restaurant and at Northeastern Illinois University. Every week, he and his class go to the grocery store, the laundromat, and the recycling center. They play basketball with typical peers. They learn how to cook, how to count money, and how to ride public transit. They learn how to wash cars, repair bikes, garden, and take care of plants. In fact, a group of students from Northside Learning Center takes care of the plants in this very building, the headquarters of CPS. National experts in special education consider community-based instruction to be the state-of-the-art when it comes to educating students with moderate cognitive disabilities. Anybody who wants to learn more about our school is more than welcome to come and visit and take a tour. It's located on Bryn Mawr Avenue near Pulaski. The attendance area is anywhere north of Roosevelt Road. Please, if any one of, any one of you knows of a child who might benefit, you're welcome to find out more. If you haven't heard of Northside Learning Center, that may be because, be because it's not in the CPS High School Guide, and we're asking that you please put it in so that more parents can choose this program for their schools. We've also recently learned of a computer glitch in the system so that it makes it difficult for counselors to place children directly into Northside Learning Center.
Ms. Hudsbyth. Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Bob, would you have somebody follow up on that, please?
Please proceed, Ms. Armstead.
And has autism. Put out of the former school, which is Mitchell Elementary. I am his grandmother. I filed due process against the school and was accepted back to Mitchell Elementary under the stay-put order. Once readmitted, I became concerned about incidents at the school, especially during a period when his dedicated paraprofession was away. Missing articles of clothing came home with bruises on his right cheek. I arranged for him to be transferred to another school, January the twenty-second, at Willow Cather. But on that morning that he was supposed to start, which will have been January the twenty-sixth, Mitchell called and stopped the process of my children to get an education at Willow Cather. When my kid went to Willow Cather, the principal told me that my kid would not be accepted there and to return back to Mitchell, even though that I had a transfer in my hand from the following school that gave my kid the unconstitutional problems that I had reported to you all, January the twenty-seventh, and has not to this day received any help. My kid has been out of school since this transfer that he was given from Mitchell, and the school blocked him from returning to the school of choice. He's out of school now due to that phone call that they made to Willow Cather and threatened the principal not to accept my kid. They sent my kid back to a community school, which is, which is less valuable and has not any resources to help my kid. They sent my kid to a Level Three. I thought CPS does not contain self-containment. My kid is human, and he needs help.
Ms. Armstead, thank you.
Ms. Armstead, James, would you, would you see the lady in black, Cheryl Costin? She'll follow up with you.
Please state your name.
Good afternoon, board. My name is Sylvia Sanchez Garcia. I am a parent from the UNO Charter School Network, the Zizumbo campus. I'm here to, today to show my support with the current transition plan, where the UNO schools will officially transfer from the UNO management team to the new UCSN management team. I have witnessed firsthand how hard this, this new team from UCSN has been working to ensure that the best transition is possible. As a parent, any change in leadership can cause anxiety, confusion, and uncertainty. However, I have been more than pleased with the communication, dedication, and commitment these individuals have demonstrated. They have kept an open line of communication to answer any questions, have always invited us, parents, to the UCSN monthly board meetings so that we are, we can be well-informed, and they have also included several parents in the creation of the UCSN Five-Year Strategic Plan, where we have been given the opportunity as parents to have our voices heard, as well as work with UCSN leaders to create a plan and vision for the next five years, which will serve a community of parents who have had the privilege to choose a charter school. And last but not least, I would like to thank the chairman of the UCSN Board, Mr. Rich Rodriguez, and his, and his leadership team, who has been working hard in continuing to... and his leadership team, who has been working hard in continuing to provide us with the great schools that we, as parents, have chosen to send our children to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Armstead.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Our next speaker, please.
Hi. Good afternoon.
Please state your name.
My name is Erin Rensink. I'm a parent at Darwin Elementary School in Logan Square. I've been a parent there for the past three years. My family chose Darwin because we believe in its mission. We wanted to stay in our neighborhood, and most of all, I believe, in public, district-run schools. Darwin has come a long way in the short three years we've been parents there, but it's been quite the ride. Despite CPS putting it on the closing list and cutting seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of funding three years ago when my son was in his first year preschool, the school is thriving. I'm here to ask for equitable funding and equitable support of our public schools. Let me tell you about a few of the great things that are happening just four blocks from my home at Darwin. Darwin has now a game-changing leadership program, a blossoming music program that includes concert band, rock band, ukulele choir, concert ukulele choir, junior ukulele choir, guitar, concert choir, and piano lab. We have an after-school program facilitated by Columbia College that focuses on art, science, English, and math. Kindergarten through sixth grade, started flamenco class after school just yesterday. Our teachers and administrators are working hard to find the funding to support these programs through grants and partnerships. We would love to have CPS be partners in the success in our schools. I can only imagine what an amazing place our school would be with sufficient funding. I have nothing but the utmost gratitude and love for the hard-working teachers and administrators that make our school the inspiring place that it is. We love our neighborhood school. Every school should have these programs in addition to being a safe and inspiring learning environment. Every parent and child in Chicago should have that choice. I would love for CPS to be able to share more of the successes in our public schools. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rensick. Our next speaker, please. Kayla Kennedy King-Washington, last call. Moving on to the next speaker, Speaker fifty-three, please, Brenda Gutierrez, followed by Speaker fifty-four, Ed Bannon, and the last speaker, Speaker fifty-five, Willem Colaway. Please state your name.
First, I want to make sure everybody got a pamphlet, these little handouts, eh? Gave out.
Please state your name.
My name is Brenda Gutierrez, and my son is a ninth grader at Intrinsic Charter School. He has an IEP. He has a learning disability. He was not eligible for selective enrollment because he received a nine in the ISAT instead of a ten for IEP students. Because of this, I chose to send him to Intrinsic Charter School. My son is not a child who has behavioral issues or is disrespectful. He's a bright and intelligent young man that deserves a great education, but the system is failing him and many other students. I have submitted a handout regarding my concerns, along with email correspondence between myself, the teachers, and administrators at Intrinsic for you to review. My son is in algebra, and his grade is a hundred percent. I'm very proud of him. However, he has a forty-six-minute class called Personal Learning Time, PLT, four times a week. For months, he was assigned to do second-grade math until I questioned it, and it was then changed to sixth-grade math. Ms. Ami Gandhi, the PLT director, explained that STE Math is to reinforce math because the score was low on the ISAT. However, if he hasn't eaten algebra, why focus on second-grade math? Why not start teaching him geometry to prepare him for sophomore year? Another issue is that they have not taken any math tests this semester. How can that be? What schools don't administer math tests? In addition, he has only had one semester of gym, when it is mandated by the Illinois State law that gym in high school should be year-round. Also, my son has been bullied, and nothing was done until I got involved. It went on for weeks, even though he had documented and told his teachers. He was also bullied by the classroom paraprofessional, Ms. Corita Mitchell, who would threaten him with demerits, which we had a meeting with her and Ms. Trojan, the culture advisor. Also, after having a meeting with PLT Assistant Teacher, Mr. Roberto Flores, has now taken to ignore, has asked for help from Mr. Flores, Mr. Flores has responded to that he himself does not understand or does not know how to do the math. I believe in rules, and I also believe that authority figures should not abuse their position. Through all these meetings, Melissa Seikos, the principal, was not involved, neither were the assistant principals, Jacob Morgan nor Team League.
Ms. Gutierrez, thank you.
Because of this, my son's not going to be returning next year.
Thank you, Ms. Gutierrez.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Hi. My name is Ed Bannon. Thank you for your time, Mr. President Vitale, and congratulations, Mr. Ruiz. Be careful what you wish for in a situation, but always look. I'm the president of the Dunning Neighborhood Organization on the northwest side. I'm also a parent of two students, three students, at Dever Elementary, two third-graders. I'm here today to recommend a solution to the deplorable and embarrassing overcrowding at all the schools in the Dunning neighborhood. We need a new district-run school. Dever is over capacity with no dedicated art room, music room, or library. Canty's Edition, currently under construction, or soon to be under construction, will leave no room for growth, no plan for a future there. Bridge is also over capacity. Despite all these challenges, I find no deficiency among the staff at Dever. Having just gone through parent-teacher conferences, I've seen the dedication of the teachers to my children's education, and I've heard the same reports about quality staff at the district-run schools of Candy, Bridge, Taft, and Stymets. We have great schools, but we need to address the overcrowding crisis on the northwest side by providing the families with a quality neighborhood school in the Dunning Reed Tiff area. The land is under lease by CPS on the northwest corner of Irving and Oak Park, and the funding is available through the Tiff. This new school should be a district-run neighborhood school. Charter schools have shown no additional benefit to our education system over district-run schools. We don't need an added layer of bureaucracy to have a successful school. We do need a district-run school with adequate facilities. I ask the Board to support this new district-run school on the northwest side. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bannon. And our last speaker, please, William Colaway, last call. Mr. President, this concludes public participation.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. And I want to thank all of our, I think I want to thank all of our speakers today for their comments and questions, and I would ask my fellow board members if they have any reactions to what they've heard today or any questions of the management regarding the open agenda items that we are to vote on later in the meeting. Carlos?
I know Jesse followed up on the delegation from Alfred Nobel School, and yes, we need to take a look at what they are saying in terms of the conditions of the building. We had a big group here.
Yes.
Follow-up. Thank you.
David?
Yes.
Also, the only one that we heard from that you didn't formally refer was Good.
Yeah.
Sarah Good.
Right.
So if we could just get some feedback on what's going on there.
Yep.
The concerns are pretty significant.
Yeah.
Yep.
And President Vitale, I did ask to be able to meet with her during my office hours, set up an hour to meet with the parent from Good.
Appreciate that, Mahalia. Jess?
There is a process that the CEO's office follows up on some of these things. We might, and look at ways to publicize that follow-up happens. It is happening, but I think it's good for all of us that have sat here and heard these concerns that you know that the concerns are listened to and are being addressed to the best of our ability. Those that can be done in the short term, we address as quickly as possible. Those are the longer-term projects, they are on the to-do list. So we'll work on making sure folks know where those, the status of those to-dos are.
Any other thoughts or comments? I would just, I would make my standard observation that oftentimes, people who are speaking to us believe in what they're telling us and believe in the challenges that the district faces from their perspective. The facts that they quote are not always accurate, and so we need to, we will make sure that when we hear some of this stuff, we actually fact-check ourselves to make sure what we're being told is correct externally. David? Okay.
Just one thing. Sorry, Ms. Biggs, just this chart you gave, quite apart from the issue of charter schools, would be more persuasive if you looked at opening of schools, new schools, charter schools, especially in areas in which there is an overcrowding problem rather than underutilization. So the aggregate numbers, frankly, don't tell you much. You've had speakers come and tell you about over week, you know, month after month about overcrowding in the areas. So there's, it's a geography which has both underutilization and overutilization. So I think if you want to make this a somewhat more persuasive argument, you really need to do the geography of this issue, not just the big numbers.
Thanks, Henry. Mahalia?
No. One other thing, you know, it's very difficult when you sit here and hear parents who are for neighborhood schools, parents who are for charter schools, and you sit here and you wonder, how do you do both? I think it would be great if some, because these are all our neighborhood schools. And I often say to some parents when I speak, if you are not in favor of your charters in your neighborhood, school, in your neighborhoods, don't send your kids. They could not exist if parents did not want their children to be there. They couldn't. If there were no children in the schools, then they could not exist. But since they are, why can't we learn to work together? Because they're all our kids.
Excuse me. Excuse me. You've had your chance.
I'll be happy to meet with them.
I'm sorry. You can meet with her if you'd like, but not here, not here in this session. Thank you. You have the opportunity. Dr. Heinz has offered you it.
I'll be happy to meet with you.
Just a final personal comment. I believe this is, you know, I'm changing my capacity in being at these meetings going forward, and I think Sarah Karp may be changing her capacity in being at these meetings going forward. She's done a great job in reporting on our work here and the important work of public education in Chicago. I think she's moving on to a new role, hopefully still reporting, and I'm looking at that corner of the room, and we were talking about fact-checking, and those are the folks who fact-check us and hopefully keep everybody on the right set of data, and it's important. And we appreciate their oftentimes critique and sometimes pat on the back, but we need both. And so, Sarah, best wishes in your new endeavors, and to all of you, we'll continue to get the facts out there.
And I would just say, you know, frankly, it's great to hear about so many folks who are, believe that their neighborhood schools are doing a great job and that the schools are working for their children, apparently in spite of us, but frankly, from our standpoint, to hear their commitment to their schools and the work they're doing, it makes me feel good that they believe that their schools are doing well, and, like I said, maybe in spite of us. We don't think it's in spite of us, but obviously, that's what their view is. But it is good news when we have so many people who believe that their schools are doing well for their children, and we are pleased with that, so that everybody knows. The other theme that comes through as we listen to people, frankly, month after month, is the issue of overcrowding and the issue of budgets. And I think Ginger today laid out our challenge. It's not like we aren't working to generate more revenue for this district, but the truth of the matter is, our only ability to do so is to work with legislatures in Springfield, which I assure you we do. We are, in fact, at our level constrained in the amount of revenue that we can generate on our own without the cooperation of Springfield. So we would love to actually do much of what everybody comes in here and asks us to do, to not cut budgets, to increase budgets, to have more counselors, to fix the overcrowding problem. We're not in disagreement with anybody that comes and asks for that sort of stuff. The reality is, we have our challenges with getting the revenue and the resources to do that.
One thing.
Sure.
On the charter issue, first, as I've said multiple times publicly before, I agree we need to be more strategic and thoughtful as we review going forward because of the decrease in students, our student population, when we're looking at charters. I do want to remind those of you who are concerned about charter openings of two things. First of all, the process to review charters is required by law every year. Number two, if we say no to all of those proposals, every one of those applicants can go to the state commission and put their proposal in, and that commission can approve that proposal and put a charter school in the district under current state law. So I encourage you to be as active in your advocacy as you are here with your legislators about changing that law that allows that commission to overrule this board and put open charters in our district. So that's very important, because we could say no to all of the proposals, and they could all be approved. So you just need to remember that.
And we would have no control whatsoever on those schools, where now we at least have a contractual agreement with the charters we open, those none whatsoever.
David? Henry?
Sorry to keep going on this, but just because the budget was raised again. As Ginger pointed out, the funding, the pension shortfall adds a huge amount to the deficit on the budget, because it is almost seven hundred million, as I remember her number. But just so everybody will know out there, there's what's called a structural deficit in this budget, so that the money which is raised by taxes and fees is less than required to operate the system as it now exists. That's simply a fact. The pension, putting money into the pension system puts the single greatest strain on the budget, but it's not the only strain on the budget. It's also been pointed out that at the central administration, there have been very severe cuts over the last years, and what everybody has tried to avoid is cuts in the schools, cuts to teachers, cuts to counselors. So it's a fact, and as President Vitale just said, people come with lots of ideas to raise money. Almost all those ideas are outside the immediate purview of this board and the district. They sit in Springfield, whether it's raising the cap on property taxes, whether it's finding taxes in the state of Illinois so more money could come down to the district. Illinois vastly underfunds its public schools. I think it was mentioned, we're one of the worst in the country. This is not a poor state. It's a relatively wealthy, balanced state, and yet, we have a very fouled-up system in the financing of public education. So, you know, whether you're looking at TIFs, you're looking at a lot of other things, there aren't a lot of magic wands out there. That's just a fact. And insofar as there are solutions, they really lie in Springfield.
Thank you, Henry. And with that, Henry, do you have a motion?
Yes, I have a motion. It's not that the state should give us more money, which is true, but.
I pass it.
I move for the passage of motion number fifteen dash oh four two-two dash MO one and the commencement of a closed session to consider the subjects specified in the motion.
May I have a second?
Second, the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Dr. Benin?
Yes.
Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Board members up?
Yes.
Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
Six size zero nays.
We'll move into closed session. The meeting of the Board of Education is reconvened. Madam Secretary, please proceed with the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will start with items from closed session, and I will begin with council retention. These items do require a vote. First report is the law firm Lanier, Mouchen, Dunbrow, Becker, Levin, and Tommenberg, LTD, and the second report is the law firm of Schiff-Harden, LLP. And, Mr. President, for the record, I would like to note an abstention for Vice President Reese on that matter. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
I'll proceed with a roll call. Dr. Benin?
Aye.
Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
With the noted abstention.
With the.
Thank you. Board members up?
Yes.
Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
Six size zero nays with the noted abstention for Vice President Reese. I will continue with settlements and one other matter. These items do require a vote, and they are: First report, workers' compensation, payment for lump-sum settlement for Maria A. Martinez, case number twelve, WC nine-nine-zero-three. The second report is the workers' compensation, payment for lump-sum settlement for Lucy Roland, case number thirteen, WC zero-one-eight-eight-zero-five. The third report is the workers' compensation, payment for lump-sum settlement for Chartrice D. Simmons, case number ten, WC two-four-two-six-two. The fourth report is the workers' compensation, payment for lump-sum settlement for Crystal A. Williams, case number thirteen, WC nine-nine-nine-three. The fifth report is the approved settlement for Portage Park Teachers' Grievance, and the sixth report is the Property Tax Appeal Refund, Authorized Settlement for U.S. Fitness, LLC Regarding Its Property Tax Years 2009 through 2011. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Dr. Benin?
Yes.
Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Board members up?
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
Six size zero nays. I will continue with items from the board, and these items do require a vote, and they are: First report, resolution by the Board of Education of the City of Chicago regarding the dismissal of Ophelia Lee Doyle, tenure teacher assigned to Daniel S. Wentworth Elementary. For the record, I would like to note that this resolution accepts the hearing officer's recommendation. The second report is the resolution approving the chief executive officer's recommendation to dismiss educational support personnel, and the third report is the resolution approving chief executive officer's recommendation to dismiss a probationary-appointed teacher. And for the record, I would like to note that on April 16, 2015, the board members and the office of the board received the CEO's recommendation to dismiss the probationary-appointed teacher pursuant to Board Lu 4-7B2B and 105 ILCS 5/34-84. Her recommendation included the name of the teacher affected and the reason. She also noted that the teacher affected will be notified of their dismissal after adoption of the resolution. The fourth report is the resolution to approve the chief executive officer's recommendation to dismiss non-renewed probationary-appointed teachers at the end of the 2014-2015 school year. And for the record, I would like to note that on April 16, 2015, the board members and the office of the board received the CEO's recommendation to dismiss probationary-appointed teachers pursuant to Board Lu 4-7B2A and 105 ILCS 5/34-84. Her recommendation included the names of the teachers and the reasons, and she also noted that the teachers affected will be notified of their dismissal after adoption of the resolution. And the fifth report is the resolution authorizing the honorable termination of regularly certified and appointed teachers, and, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I believe Vice President Reese has a motion, please.
Yes, I move that the board adopt the minutes of the closed session meeting of March 25, 2015 pursuant to Section 2.06 of the Open Meetings Act. Board members reviewed these minutes and determined that the need for confidentiality continues to exist. Therefore, the minutes of the closed session meeting held on March 25, 2015 shall be maintained as confidential and not available for public inspection at this time.
May I have a second?
Second.
I'll proceed with a roll call. Thank you. Dr. Benin?
Yes.
Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Board members up?
Yes.
Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
Six size zero nays. Mr. President, I will now continue with the items on the public agenda and only read the board report numbers since the titles and board reports appeared on the public agenda. I will begin with resolutions. These items do require a vote. I would like to note for the record that a separate vote will be taken on RS2. This is the resolution to enjoin the duties of the Vice President to include duties of the interim chief executive officer at the end of the public agenda items. So, Mr. President, the first resolution is RS1, and this item does require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will now continue with CO1. This is to advise that the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for Wednesday, May 27, 2015, will be held at the CPS Loop Office. The board meeting will begin at 10:30 a.m. Public participation guidelines are available on our cpsboe.org website or by calling the board office, 773-553-1600. For the May 27, 2015 board meeting, advance registration to speak and observe will be available beginning Monday, May 18 at 8 a.m. and will close on Friday, May 22 at 5 p.m. or until all slots are filled, and you can advance register during the registration period by the following methods: online, by phone, or in person. And the public participation segment of the meeting will begin as indicated on the meeting agenda. Mr. President, I'll continue with additional items on the public agenda that do require a vote, and they are EX1, AR1, 2, and 3, OP1, PR1, and for the record, I would like to note an abstention for Vice President Reese on PR1, moving on to PR2, 3, and 4. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Madam Secretary, if there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote with the noted abstention.
Thank you. I'll continue with additional items on the public agenda that do not require a vote, and they are EX2, EX3, and AR4. And, Mr. President, these items just need to be accepted by the board.
Please mark "Accepted and filed."
Thank you, Mr. President. We will now proceed with the separate vote on RS2, the resolution to enjoin the duties of the Vice President to include duties of an interim chief executive officer. For the record, I would like to note, one, an abstention for Vice President Reese on this matter, and also note for the record that this resolution has been revised and that the final will be in the action. And, Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
May I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Thank you.
I will proceed with a roll call. Dr. Benin?
Yes.
Dr. Hines?
Yes.
An abstention for Vice President Reese on that matter. Board members up?
Yes.
Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
Thank you. We have five a's, one abstention, and this item is adopted. Mr. President, there are no further items on the public agenda.
Here we go, no further items. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.